Good afternoon, everybody. Today's February seventh, the time is twelve oh four, and we'd like to call our monthly board trustees meeting to order. Can I get a real call, please?
Carla Leonero.
Here.
Rose Greenow.
Here.
Gina Lawman. Yolanda Pedronis.
Here.
Frank Ariola.
Eric.
Richard Soblan. Eva Cortista.
Here.
Yara Form. Dr. Mary Lava.
Here.
Kenne Cortista. Simone Ballinger.
Here.
Attorney Rollamont Teno. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
My son is walking. Legal is coming.
Legal is coming.
Let's recite the mission statement, please.
Sir.
Guam Community College is a leader in career and technical workforce by the highest quality student-centered education and charge training for my community. Okay. In your packets, last month's minutes are there. Could you please take a look at that? Can I get a motion to accept last month's minutes, please? Second? Long labor.
Hi.
Just take a moment to look at it. There's no concerns, will they accept the minutes? Moving on to communications.
There is no communications at this point.
Moving on to public discussion.
No requests for a public discussion.
Moving on to reports. President's report, please.
Starting off with the financial status of the college. Year to date, the college has received four point eight million dollars. Four point six million from the general fund. Approximately seventy one thousand from the general fund to support the Wichi Scholarship Program and a hundred thousand for the Port Commission. And so we continue to receive regular allotments from the Department of Administration. Moving on to other activities here at the college. Couple of things that the college is working on. There is an opportunity for the college to potentially begin or explore providing a maritime academy. And the second thing we're looking at is possibly working on paralegal programs. The paralegal program is going to help the legal aspects, primarily those that have like colors. Undisputed probates and stuff like that, so that we can assist. And so those are things that we're currently looking at. And then maritime one, our intent right now is to explore a possibility of having something for high school students and this helps them to enter into like a course guide. So we're looking at piloting a program this summer and it takes several months for them to get clearances. And of course, one of the things we're going to emphasize is that drug testing is, you know, of course, already done up on the program, so that's.
Wouldn't that also apply like March Marines?
That's not what you said.
That's definitely, yes, but that's the fact, yeah.
What size of cohort are we looking at?
So we're looking at potentially a cohort to start with maybe sixteen, no more than twenty, but we're gonna take a interest inventory of the high school students now. We're doing that now for our summer program. So we do have programs that we offer during the summer, not just for public school students, but also the private, non-public. So in the past, we have received interest from the charter schools and from the private schools, so they can participate. And depending on the school, they'll either be able to take it as an elective for high school with a reverse transfer back to high school, or they'll carry that college credit. This is not going to be a college credit right now. This program is only seven days. It's a seven-day training, but or setting courses that they take, about a week, little over a week for them to complete the program.
A certificate of occupation?
There is a certification that they'll obtain at the end.
And it's free to the participants or is it a duty?
For, so for the pilot that was going to do, it's going to be included as part of our regular CTE summer offers. Just to see how, what the interest is and whether or not individuals would be willing to attend them. Other things that we're working on, well, one thing that we did have an opportunity for the employees was to attend a opioid overdose response training that was provided by Guam Community Health. And so, you know, how to deal with individuals that come into the classroom and so, or how administrators or other support staff, they come across somebody who has, you know, addiction that we don't have. We don't currently have that camp, but.
Get us something, we can house one of the police or the nursing department.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I will take a look at that.
Maybe you have AAD, right, in order to pay the fees?
Yes, yes. One exciting thing is that our spring twenty twenty five in Guam is up. And that does not include the start for the E D M.
Oh.
So that doesn't include the students that will begin the E D M program in March.
That's good.
I'll give you an update later on the E D M, but we have significant interest in the E D M program. Significant interest in the E D M program.
There is, yeah.
So a lot of people are asking. We're working through that, so. And then I just really want to give Dr. Tudela and Dean Polar and all of the individuals that are working on the coordination core increase. The response to the core increase was submitted yesterday. It's due next week, but it was submitted yesterday to the team. And like I said, focusing on two areas, one that has to do with updating curriculum and the second piece is has to do with the student voice. Yeah, how the student voice gets incorporated either into curriculum updates or student support services. And so all of that information led by Dr. Gina and Dean Polar and of course, working with faculty senate, all the individuals that have put in a lot of time to provide additional support and evidence for those two core increases. And that would be the basis of the visit that will be here March fourth. March fourth and the close out or the exit report on March fifth. And so we'll be setting the calendar invites to the board and to the community in terms of where individuals can participate in the open forums. And so that is going on. Chairwoman O'Pata from the foundation has, and the foundation board has approved a fundraising scheduled events that was presented to them. And so there are several things that will be coming through annual giving campaign and will also targeted and planned giving in addition to all the other events that we do, whether it be the Vols tournament and some other potential activities that we're putting together. One other, just one other initiative, just so that folks know that it's on our radar, is that we are, right after the approbation visit, we will be putting a focus on the early college initiative. And so that's something that we're hoping to launch in August of this year. And we're also preparing for our upcoming sanitary inspection. I've requested for that inspection to begin at the end of April or early May so that it doesn't interfere with our spring semester. And so we're doing a lot to clean house.
Is everything in line at the moment within the budget that we approved?
Yes, yes, but we still have to put some of the items out to bid because there's a lot of lining fixtures that we have to replace. There is tie link that is out to bid for several of the classrooms. As you can see, the campus is starting, the painting is starting for the campus. And so we're hoping to have a positive. There's some things that we're still deciding as to how we're going to approach it. Really, that's the screens on all the windows. And especially for the buildings that don't have any screens identified in the original design, like the building two thousand, because that would be a major project for us to put screens on. So we're looking at that before we really make that move. Other things that, aside from the painting, other things that we're working on, still following up with the insurance. The adjusters were here at the beginning of the week, so we're hoping to get some updates. And simultaneous to that, there is, we're continuing to provide updates to FEMA. So once the insurance component is resolved, then we will move forward with the FEMA claims. Those are all in motion. And I will be taking a tour of the campus today to identify other areas that need to be cleaned up. So Vice Presidents and I will be doing that, walk through the campus, because there's still some areas that we need to. Are you?
Looks busy though, Doctor O'Pata.
It's always busy here. It's highly. The title in the student, yeah, so the student lounge that should be done, I think, this week, next week. So they're refurbishing the student lounge. And classrooms, I believe, in building D, we're waiting for the, to make an award. And part of it is because some of the tiles are chipping and they're looking, so we don't want to get sighted. So little by little, based on the funding that we've provided, to continue to upgrade campus. And that's all I have for now, so.
Thank you. Moving on. Monthly activity reports.
To start off, on January twenty fourth, twelve P M, the Student Center Training Room, Kops and I held our first general meeting of the semester and our student boards are very excited for our study this semester. Then at two P M over Zoom, on the same day, I attended the policy review. And then on February third at eleven, and that day, I attended the environmental technician working at one.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on. Simone?
How can you everybody? I think the first thing that I bring attention to is the ISMP work that was started in the college assembly in the fall and continued, or continued with surveys after the assembly. And then this semester, we've met a group of, of the wanted administrators, a few faculty and some staff in this room, actually, going through a lot of the comments that were collected and brainstorming and going through a process of actually thinking back at our vision, our mission, and looking at what's working and what, you know, sort of just taking a look from the, from the very foundation, right, which is the vision and the mission, and then building, I guess, towards the ISMP. So that was a pretty intensive few days. We were looking at, going through all the comments from everyone and then dividing into areas and just sort of coming up with an idea as a draft of what we see for the college and the direction we've been going in, things like that. And so I understood, what I understand from there is that those drafts get pushed forward to other groups. So the people looking down at them, they sort of gain value, to use the term, right? And then ideas working towards a specific ISMPs. So that was, that was an interesting process. Always fun to do that kind of work with other people from all other areas, whether it's basic faculty, teacher, staff, everybody. Recently, we just reviewed the budget, the R P F. We had a very thorough presentation. I learned things that I never knew, which was pretty cool. I know that's in the business coming up, but I just wanted to make sure that that did come through the resources planning and facilities committee. And then I think that's pretty much it. We are, as Dr. O'Pata said, and faculty said, we're talking about the curriculum and working with D Cs and to discuss and make sure we're all at the same page about what needs to be done and what support we can offer in certain ways and things like that. And then looking forward to a presentation before the visit, which is forthcoming, coming up very soon.
Kitchen. Support staff. Any trustees? Want to report any activities?
Policy review I attended. And then the, I don't know, story to report the A O C C conference.
Trustee Joyce was there too as well, for those both. In addition to those two, I also attended the environmental tech completion ceremony earlier this week. And then. Budget review.
The one thing that I wanted to mention is that I wanted to reach out to Jen to see whether I could be a guest speaker at our conference. So the Sherman Conference, the annual conference, I suppose she needs to.
Well, Jennifer.
What rest of our room?
Thanks, God, I'm speaking, yeah.
So we're gonna try, we're gonna try, if Sherman's gonna bring her in for that, we're gonna try and dovetail that into another college activity so that.
She was.
I can talk about it. We can talk about it because if it's, if your event is in August, depending on when that is, we could always put together something. There is a, an effort to bring a discussion surrounding workforce development as a result of the Microangel Islands Forum that brings in representatives from the region. So depending on how we can, I mean, the timing, we just have to base it on the timing to see how that all works together.
Jen would be huge.
Well, because of Jen, everybody knew what Guam Community College was at that conference.
For sure.
From the beginning with the Metallica Scholars Award. And I was sending her a message about meeting the individual representative from Tesla. She stopped the concert, I mean, the conference and said, where's Frank Ariola from Guam Community College? But yeah, every single day, someone, you guys can attest to it. Guam Community College is known at the A O C C.
I agree, Margaret. Frisley mentioned, along the top of the breast.
And of course, we learn something new all the time. And trustee Pedronis was showing us how to translace all the conversation, including a snippet and a draft A I policy. So based on several of the sessions being in A I. So, and also thanks for helping us secure a potential guest speaker for our college assembly focusing on A I, so look forward to that.
Oh yeah, that's the other thing. The, with A I and Chat G P T and other things, they're, they're really, they really presented them. There were a lot of presentations about how it's impacting students and teachers and what the future is, you know, with it, so. We're catching up.
Been every part of your life. Yeah, even banking services.
And semi-digital recruitment.
Even recruitment. Which I don't.
I don't think they should have that as well, so.
It's not all rosy, yeah.
I believe this. It's actually the challenge for the future. How are you gonna do that? Yeah, I've been, I've been discussing it a lot at faculty senate. There's a subcommittee looking at it and I think what we're working on is, it's easy to take like a perspective, right? Especially from the English department, because we're just getting A I essays. But we really want to see it as enough where it can fit in and how, more importantly, we can educate students on its use, because it's one thing to like, just like, great, it's a, it's a great tool, but not help the students work through. It's like you want to give your kids a phone, just be like, there you go, right? You want to kind of give them guidelines and educate them on the use. And so we're looking at how that would happen, because if we're gonna embrace it, we want to make sure we're doing that, that we have also that we're not just expecting the students to figure it out while they're, you know, so they could have a problem.
I think the students are ahead of us.
Well. You know, you know. But you know, also it's very helpful for teachers, because they can, they can make a left to a right.
They can make a left to a right.
Yeah, which, you know.
It could do a PowerPoint presentation, it can summarize, you know. It does so much. And so what we're talking about is breaking down the groups that are going to be present so that we can feature, you know, the founding act for those groups, the employee groups. That way it's beneficial to everyone and we're not just approaching it from the.
General.
Yeah, exactly.
Moving on, unfinished business?
Starting with the construction project updates with the Wellness Center. So the Wellness Center. U S Fish and Wildlife Service requires information on the firm that is going to be used to handle the relocation of the threatened species if they are identified. So we're waiting for them to provide details on the proposed relocation site. Once that's done, we can submit our application to USDA. USDA is standing by and we are monitoring as to whether or not the effects of any of the executive orders is going to forgive it us, but we're, we're gonna meet with them to see other options so that we can move that project forward. Building B is currently at ninety-two point thirty-one percent complete. We do have an elevator as a change order and the elevator completion date right now is scheduled for November sixth, twenty twenty-five. And there is also, we're pending a request for an extension for timeline because the timeline was originally identified as December thirty-first and we are in February and the building is not completed, but.
So Frank, will that elevator delay impact on?
Yeah, it's ocean, but we might be able to get.
Talking to stories.
Well, that's, that's what you mean, would be, you would bring, come up with a condition on.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll identify, because the second floor really on that building is, we have an elevator right now. And so it's just a matter of timing as to when the replacement elevator comes in the expedition.
As long as that's clear, certified, you know.
It is right now, but we're gonna be taking that one out and putting the no one in. So it might be a delay. But in the event that there's an individual and needs the service, we will bring the service down or move the classroom down if they can't access it on the second floor. So the second floor of building B is the open lab. So we may have to provide an alternative, or we will provide an alternative for a, another place in the event that we have a student that needs to help.
If the condition was.
Yeah, so we'll go through that process, but that part has been extended for the elevator. And we're just waiting for the request for the additional time. The Workforce Development Center is currently at seventy-five percent complete and the completion date is still scheduled for May thirty-first. So we're working through that. Culinary Arts Building, now that the roof has been completed, is at eighty-six point ninety-one percent. And they completed the roof replacement on January twenty-first. And so at the same time, they're working on the framing for the P V system. So we had funding from a other grant that we're going to be using for P Vs on culinary. So that, that is going through as well. And we just, we had to put out an additional bid for kitchen equipment because there's some equipment that was not purchased on the original or was not awarded on the original bid and some of it were going to leave occupancy. So that is going out.
Was it, was it just a supplement or we actually had to put it out on a separate?
No, we have to, because in the original bid that went out, we reduced the number of some of the items that we were purchasing based on the original funding. But when the funding got swapped out, we didn't go back out for the. So we're just adding the, if we have ten, we ordered six, we have to buy the additional four. Otherwise, we're gonna. Otherwise, we're gonna have a footprint that has holes. So it's still the yes. So we're working through that now. And so culinary is at eighty-six point ninety-one. The building two thousand generator, ninety-nine, still at ninety-nine percent complete and we do have a scheduled power outage this weekend so that they can, they have to do some work, additional work. And then the two items remain, a muffler, thimble and a blanket expected to arrive February twentieth. So hopefully that will complete by the end of this month. It's been hanging on ninety-nine percent for several months now. Solar parking, solar parking and building D, P V systems. We are just pending two additional clearances from EPA and Department of Ed. And so we will be making a phone call to them to follow up on their clearances so that we can put that out to bid. And so that will be a major project for, that we will be sending through for. We have to get approval on that, so to be a developed project.
What was that, the A G? Yeah, I think it was the A G.
But we'll see. So that's where we are in terms of the capital budgets.
Thank you so much.
And Dr. O'Pata, you need to push that wellness center. I'm scared about losing funding.
Well, it's a grant. I mean, it's a loan, so.
The, what are, what are the things that they need to replace? Like the butterflies or snails?
Right now is potentially butterflies and snails. And so, of course, we won't know what's there until they start moving. And if they do find it, then they have to know where to put it.
Why not? And then we can create like preserve here on campus somewhere that's friendly.
Yeah.
It's mandatory.
We just need to make sure that if we don't move it then here to there and then we start to do something over the other end of the campus, yeah.
The chairman's already volunteered all the board members to assist with the relocation.
Relocation, butterfly study park.
We'll take one of the other grow market. It takes some of that.
Any other comments? Okay, moving on to new business.
Okay, so presented to the board this morning as reviewed and recommended by the Resource Planning and Facilities Committee. The FY twenty-six budget request is submitted for approval. The request, the current budget that the college has is at twenty-two million, seven hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred sixty-six. Our fiscal year twenty-six request is twenty-three million, six hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars. And even though we can go through all the specifics and the different categories, two major areas that stand out in the increase really relate to the retirement fund contribution or unfunded retirement and the employer's share of the health insurance, dental health insurance. And so those two items alone make up approximately nine hundred thousand, which is the difference between our current budget and the proposed budget. Just in medical insurance alone, our increase in premium for the current year is almost six hundred thousand dollars. How many percent did that compare to? Thirty, we don't know, thirty-two percent. So because.
Because the burden is on the A B C now, not the.
Yeah, so the, so the employees pay the same rate, but because of the self-insurance and the negotiated rates that were received at the end of the year, our share was significantly increased. So that's one. And then the second one has to do with the amount that we are asked to budget for unfunded retirement. So in twenty twenty-four, the unfunded, or the retirement contribution. So in twenty twenty-four, the unfunded or the retirement contribution was at twenty-nine point seven percent. What we are currently paying is at thirty percent and what we're asked to budget is at thirty-four percent. So again, it's a budget projection that we are going to need. And so uh you you'll see in other, in the in the presentation of our budget that uh because of our increase in solar capacities that we have, we're looking to decrease power. But the net effect of the budget request increase, that also includes uh adjustments for faculty and adjustments for staff, um also takes into consideration attrition, those folks that have retired and being able to recruit at a lower starting salary.
Yep.
Those are all netted against the amounts that we are requesting for.
Hey, Dr. Carter, just go back to the health insurance. Is there an opportunity for us to go direct uh and just pick that out ourselves? Because the problem with going along the government, they 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 base it off like the lost run, the lost runs.
And then they make the loss ratio for the whole government of all.
Versus, let's say, so.
And I don't know how.
And maybe the employees with the lower premiums, so is is it something that we can do? Cause I know the court does it.
But they are separate to government.
Yes, yes.
And the autonomous agencies can possibly do that, but we would have to see if GCC can do it, I don't know.
We have an expert on staff.
We we can inquire as to whether or not we.
We can ask yours.
We can inquire uh whether or not, but remember, we have a pool of two hundred and fifty employees.
Okay.
Um what is requested for in in the budget for the jump fund is only two hundred and one. But we have additional employees that are funded out in NAF for federal grants. So I mean, our pool is two hundred and fifty-six, maybe.
To track them.
I mean, again, but we would have to make that, we would have to do that research to see if it's something we can do.
Yeah.
And then.
Open enrollment's uh September thirty, right? Or October one?
Correct, but they usually do the negotiation around February, March, so.
So maybe we next year?
We we can explore.
I don't have to give any extra work, but I was just thinking, you know, if we can save our, you know, premiums for our employees, why not look that up?
If they can separate GCC's own, uh you know, look at what is the medical loss ratio, does it really, is it so that?
Okay.
Talk about that.
Yeah. And one we progress.
Maybe you can do it from this point forward for the plan year. Like he's going back and like slicing up all of the um carve out the loss ratio of GCC might be a lot of work. So you can start having a broker who ever is managing that, just taking the loss ratios.
I'll start off, how much is, how much are we contributing? And then how much are we, you can look at that, how much is really what we spend uh with GCC?
We said there was a three hundred thousand dollar increase, right?
So.
This is very significant, whatever they is probably, they're just allocating that thirty percent of the overall government. Then when we know that our MRR is high, then we can work on some initiatives to decrease that, you know, our preventive or screening.
So our current year, our proposed um medical contributions for fiscal year twenty-six is about one point five. So. One point five in medical, small amount in dental.
Yeah, that's a dental.
Do the retirees follow your?
No.
So that goes to the artist, people.
So there's. The retirees for GCC are under the government of one retirement system, so we don't have to budget or pay for any of those.
Even even enough.
Worth the trouble, I'm telling you this.
No, even though not to separate, but at least we know that if it's high, then we'll work on initiatives, I mean.
Okay, so we'll do two things. We'll find out what kind of information that we get and then see if we have the authority to do it or whether it requires legislation for us to do that, let's see. Okay. Uh and we will take that.
I'm concerned we have issues with the federal funds with the executive order. It's been happening almost every day right now.
So the only federal, the only federal funds that we lost uh in the last month um is a small grant that we got from USAID. So it was just, it was a small contract that we had, um and so it was just because not a lot of the activities have, the activities weren't supposed to occur until April. So we agreed to terminate the contract. And the amount that we spent um coordinating that work, uh moving workers to the college. And so that's, it's less than thirty thousand dollars, yeah. So that's the only one that we know of right now.
Cause his leaders hasn't yet divided six. And every new one, under regulations, you have to remove ten. Every new project that we wanna present, you have to remove ten. So I don't know how.
We are noticing that some uh federal grants that were posted uh as information for competition have been withdrawn from the system. So there are things that we were looking at, not anything that we've applied for and has been awarded, but new grant opportunities that have been withdrawn from the grants. Yeah, so we're seeing some of that now. And subject to any other questions you have, we did have a few questions during our uh budget work session, but subject to any other questions. Um we are also presented as part of your approval, the request for the uh twenty twenty-six NAF budget, which is also included, and we've taken into consideration, um.
So the BAT, right?
Yeah, one of the BAT. So there is projected revenues that we anticipate of about five point five, five point eight million dollars. And that's associated with tuition, uh bookstore revenue, uh food services. Of course, administrative recoveries or indirect cost and interest income that we generate on our funding. And then the projected expenditures, there is an amount that we identify specifically to supplement the GOONE appropriation. And that covers some of the facilities and MIS projects, uh adjuncts and substitutes. And then the additional faculty and staff positions are identified as a set aside from the tuition increase we did many years ago. And a set aside also for the technology fee, from the technology fees. And then regular education, I mean, general expenditures to support the various uh lab fees that we collect. And the calculation is based on prior year collection and that's how the amounts are made forward. So we anticipate that with the projected revenues we have in NAF, minus the expenditures and the transfers for either the capital improvement funds or the student activity fees, that we will have a uh increase or a uh of about two hundred and twelve thousand at the end of the year. And then the last one on in your packet is the special projects and special projects really is cost, uh can cover all the cost. And we anticipate that depending on the different uh projects that either continuing education or the schools provide any additional services, we anticipate about one point six in additional revenues. And expenditures at one point three with a net profit uh for fiscal year twenty-six of about two hundred and forty thousand. These are just estimates. Uh every time we get a new contract, it's usually updated through the academic year or through the fiscal year and the appropriate expenditures provided at the same time, we put a whole set up. So the the um, so we are presenting to the board our request for your approval of twenty-three million six hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred and nine dollars for fiscal year twenty-six. Subject to any questions?
Does anyone, does anyone need time to review it?
I can review.
We had it for about a week and a half now.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, really good.
Can I get a motion to accept the budget twenty twenty-six as it's?
Motion. That's the budget that's presented.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
So that's been, you answered the questions. I'm sure my turn.
Probably just, I'd say thank you again for all the hard work.
And the support, and the support, of course, from the RPF committee and answering all the questions. And to Vicky, Florence, this is her first one, and so.
Answered, oh, yeah.
Did quite well.
Questions that that's uh, it really is expected. Insurance.
Moving on to due business, I have number two.
So this resolution two dash two zero twenty-five is a resolution that is required. Uh the college received a US Department of Agriculture Rural Utility Service Distance Learning and Telemedicine Loan Grant Program. It's a DLC, so we received the grant to provide additional um equipment to support our IT and additional uh funding to support distance education. So this is a requirement for that loan in order for us to uh execute the grant program. And this uh resolution was provided by USDA or US. And it basically requires us to adhere to the security protocols associated with accessing their systems and financial reporting and compliance, just uh keeping the line of accountability.
Yeah.
Yes, I move.
Can I get a motion to accept Resolution GCC two dash twenty twenty-five as presented?
I move.
Can I get a second?
I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to policy updates.
So there are a series of policies that are in your packet, uh and these went through the policy review. Um and so we are presenting it to the board for your approval, updates for Policy one forty-five, one fifty, one fifty-five, one sixty-five, one seventy, one seventy-two, one eighty, one ninety-one, uh one ninety-five, one ninety-six, one ninety-seven, one ninety-eight, one ninety-nine, and four sixty-five.
I believe all of us that were here were part of the monitor view. Are there any other questions? Can I get a motion to accept the updated policies as noted here? Policy one forty-five, policy one fifty, policy one fifty-five, policy one sixty-five, policy one seventy, policy one seventy-two, policy one eighty, policy one ninety-one, policy one ninety-five, policy one ninety-six, policy one ninety-seven, policy one ninety-eight, policy one ninety-nine, and policy four sixty-five in its entirety.
Motion.
Can I get a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
There's nothing else, can I get a motion to move into executive session? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. If there's nothing else.
Can I get a motion to move out of the executive session and back into regular session, please?
Most.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else?
I'm opposed.
Oh, yes. Can I get a motion to approve the president's report, please?
I will.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Anything else?
No.
Okay. With that being said...
Looking forward for next one. Good day.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
We'll adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.